All right. We're gonna jump to. Thank you.
Treasures.
Yeah, eleven B if we could share. If you've done a came to request to go to eleven B to.
Yeah.
To talk about the banking RFP. Yeah, well, as you know, we did banking RFP and you have a last meeting, we opened up the RFPs and I've had a chance to review with our finance director Monica Sees. And you should have a spreadsheet which in your packet under treasurer, treasurer file. And honestly, I think it's pretty much lays out that the choice is to continue with the child. That's my recommendation.
So I'm gonna move to continue your child savings bank for Hancock County's banking services for another three year term based on their response to the county's banking request for proposal. Thank the other responding as banking institutions for their respective proposals.
So.
Any other discussion?
We will follow this up with a, with a, once you find this decision with an email indicating similar sentiments that the, that the commissioner expressed, so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 You know, I think we got with the young lady in the fall again. To get through this quick, you'd have to sit here all morning, you know?
I wonder this morning, but commissioners, this is May Allen from child savings.
Thank you.
At least, at least it was riveting testimony, right?
Actually, I used to live in Sedgwick, so it was really cool.
And we're a pretty good looking bunch.
The scene I found out this.
Wow.
Yeah.
That is getting bottom of the barrel, isn't it? For good.
There's no, there's no sarcasm in that statement.
Not taken, not.
So we're continuing indefinitely, is how this goes?
Well.
Yep, yep.
Well.
Now, my loan was for three years.
But, but I think in the agreement allows, it will allow for two individual years for a maximum of five. And after five years, we'll have to repeat the process.
Yeah.
Unless something happens in between, but I certainly don't anticipate. Yes, yeah, I think it will, it will continue to be successful.
Well, and on the commission's side, that's a responsible thing.
It is, yes.
Every three years.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for jumping ahead.
Thanks, babe.
Do you want to finish the treasures report?
Um, let's go break, I'd say go right back to the agenda, stay on the agenda with Leroy and Tim and Connor and me patiently.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, what do we have here at the airport today, Leroy?
You wait? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm awake.
Oh, you heard that.
Sure.
It, it has been a riveting morning here.
Based on, I don't know if you want to touch on anything or if you want to take questions?
Yeah, go ahead, fire away. Well, the only thing I want to touch on is Todd, you know, I sat down just as you guys were finishing and I just wanted to recognize him also, the work he does here. It doesn't go unnoticed, he's, he's always here, he's always finding something to do, he's, he really cares about this airport, so I just wanted to throw that out.
Thank you. Now. Can I go right? You talk about getting reporting from charter operators?
Yeah, yep.
You know, for employment numbers?
Yeah.
Those have to be submitted, right? That's not something you can get from, you know, like flightware or something like that?
Right, you're correct. Yesterday was my diligence to start on that, actually. I, I sent out, I think, twenty, about twenty-five emails to various operators and, and it paid out a little, I got two hundred and fifty seats, I think, or something like that back just yesterday, so, you know, we'll continue to plug away at that. It has to be on a specific form, you know, and they want it by, it really didn't give much time. They want it by the eighteenth, I think it is, but. So what I've done is asked the operators, you know, what, how many they got and then I've done the best I can with the forms to just give it to them, let them fill it out. They can send it back to me, I'll submit it on their behalf, so they don't, so we don't take and waste in a bunch of their time on trying to make it as easy as they can, so they'll, so they will want to do it.
Well. The reason I'm asking the question is because I don't fully understand what's an employment and what is a, it's gonna be a commercial employment, is that correct?
Correct, a charter or a airline and it's a, each, let's call it a person paying passenger leaving the airport, so if you get into a charter flight, say you hired somebody to take, take you to Portland.
Yeah.
That would be an employment.
Okay.
The sightseeing flights don't count because they leave and return back at the same airport.
That, that's, that's exactly why I was asking.
I could kind of see where you was headed.
And, and I was, I was wondering about private deployments, which I, which I suspected were not in this number, but I just wanted to make sure.
Right, and the other thing would be, you know, that it won't count, I don't, is your patient airlift and your angel flight to go out here, because those are all nonprofits.
Yeah.
And, so, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll beat, beat the twigs and see what we can get, you know, we're, we're quite a ways away, but, you know, everyone, everyone gets us a little closer.
And then your item F. Columbia Air explained that they made some changes, is that changes in services or changes in management?
They've made some changes in personnel.
Okay, no services?
No services, we will have a discuss, you know, they, they did reach out to me yesterday, they're talking, they'd like to put in maybe another ten thousand gallon jet A tank. No, another twenty, twenty thousand gallon jet A tank and we'll, we'll, we'll have to have some discussions over that.
Oh, I was, I was more interested in, in maintenance, because I just, you know, hear from fellow.
Right, right, and, and, and quite, that's where I was admitting, we'll have to have some discussions, you know, if they want to come in and put a twenty thousand gallon jet A tank, they would like us to extend their lease another ten years, maybe it's time for us to ask something of them. You know, it was, I, I didn't go down that road with them yesterday on the phone, but as I was plowing snow this morning, that had that little revelation that, you know, maybe, maybe it's time to ask them seriously on what they're gonna do.
Yeah, because, you know, as, as you know, I'm a small aircraft owner and have an hammer owner at the airport and not having maintenance facilities is a big deal, you know? We have a, we have, you know, a lot of base aircraft for airport ourselves and, you know, it's just a crying shame to see them leave, because they don't want to leave.
It is, it's a missing, it's an important piece, or important pieces missing right now, yeah, and considering, you know, we know what, we know what was there before and what led to the changes, but I think, as Leroy alluded to, these changes that were discussed, I think are positive changes towards maybe fixing a few of those issues and I agree with Leroy's comment that, yeah, it's time to discussion is led, so that both sides obtain something out of this.
Well, and I think, you know, for, for the county, what's in it is that part of having a viable airport is having a full service airport. And that includes maintenance, fuel and, and you see over time and, you know, Far Harbor is a little different, but not that different, you know, you see where airports lose services, their, you know, occupancy goes down and, and, you know, therefore their revenue goes down, therefore, you know, it's just, I, I don't ever want Far Harbor to get, you know, in that position.
Right, well, isn't it part of that attraction leads to deployments?
Yes.
Which leads to the money to basically keep it the jewel that it is?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
So with all that said, I'm gonna move to accept the file airport managers' report as presented as report dated February eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With the Gassier report.
Okay.
You alphabetized each item on here and whatnot, but I noticed that H is missing and L is missing. I'm just curious, well, I just, did something accidentally get deleted that you wanted to tell us or?
No, no, it, it was kind of a canned form in the, in the program and apparently I missed some letters as I was, I think, I think the canned form goes A, B, C and then my alphabet and spelling from there is, needs a whole lot to be desired.
Well, he's going with numbers, the letters he's having trouble with.
I didn't mean to be critical, I'm just hoping, just want to make sure that you didn't drive a telephone that we missed.
Is that, is that everything, Leroy?
Yeah, that's all I had.
All right.
Thank you for the entertainment.
That's what I'm here for.
Prayer for today.
All right, now we move on to the jail attempt.
Two quick things, progressive approval, the highest should know all right, a bonus is back time branches officer of step A effective March twelve, twenty twenty-two.
Step nine, a, some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Second thing is request approval for crisis officer Robert, Robert Lissy on classification as corporal.
Some move as requested.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And the last thing, request approval of the two thousand twenty-two contract with Chelsea Howard, a family nurse practitioner that works in the jail for arrangements for medical services for the Hancock County Jail.
Move to approve and authorize the chair to sign the twenty twenty-two agreement for medical services provided to the Hancock County Jail contract with Chelsea Howard, FNP as presented and beginning March one, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I have. Thank you very much.
Are you reviewing those bills on estimates yourself or is it Dennis?
Dennis is, Doug Bill, he's gonna be taking care of.
Thank you.
Definitely. And Chuck and Charlie will start with the camera system.
So you're not gonna have anything coming back to us today?
No, no, we'll take it hopefully the next meeting when Bill sit down.
Dennis.
Dennis may have the duck bill come back this second.
Yeah.
Later today. Thank you.
Thank you, Leroy. All right. R C C. Hi, bud. Morning.
Just to remind you too, that that duck work was intended to come out of our, our.
Morning.
Morning.
A bit of a busy month.
Yeah.
Couple of items are a little complicated, but one of the big ones is we had my item three or ongoing EMS debacle around the county. The ramp that's very terminal on Swans Island, so they were limited to running the ferry. So that ended up creating quite a situation for any medical nurses. So we had a big meeting, kind of task, I kind of tasked Andrew Bradley on his, pretty much last day because he's also Swans Island, I mean, I'm sorry, Southwest Harbor's EMS chief, like, what are we gonna do with this? So they, so he got all the players together, we came up with a plan. Wasn't perfect, but we involved the Coast Guard, we involved the Southwest Harbor Police Department Dispatch. We came up with a plan on how we were gonna get EMS services up to the island for serious critical patients. All that was weather dependent, of course, between liflight and the boats. So they, they looked at it, it was gonna be approximately an hour, two hours, get somebody out there to transport somebody off the island. Fortunately, I don't believe it had any issues. They have sense of ferry fix, the ferry was also broken that day, so they weren't running there. They had that all backed, so we're back to the normal scramble, we try to get somebody out there with the ferry and all that, so I'm not sure if you're aware, the ferry service no longer just jumps out there and have a patient. The, you know, the main DOT says, eh, we're not gonna do that anymore. So we still rely on liflight a lot to go out there, which is very expensive to work the, you know, you break your knee, you know, you can fly off with weight, a day or two to get off. So that's kind of, and if you fly off, you're talking at least ten thousand dollars bill, probably more, so. Really wasn't our, really wasn't our problem to solve, however, in our best interest is we had a plan and obviously figured out why, so, so kudos to Andrew for putting that together and all the people there who are very cooperative, so.
That's a question on that very item, because I was in Coast Guard Aviation a long, long time ago, it seems like yesterday, but I, I was involved with flying people off Swans Island on one or two occasions. Is that not in the cards now and like, remember liflight didn't exist then?
Well, I think, I don't know, that would be kind of a Coast Guard answer, I mean, I know we've had the Coast Guard come into the Far Harbor Airport for, on the middle of the night, we've just picked up a few fish and we're landing.
Yeah.
Oh, and nobody's there, but we're still landing.
Yeah.
Kind of thing, I, I don't really know, it, it didn't come into effect, we did have a couple gentlemen from the Coast Guard station that were there, that never really brought that around, so, that's a good point.
Were you leaning fixed wing or helicopter?
Helicopter, and, and the reason I bring it up is because, you know, a station like Southwest Harbor wouldn't necessarily know that, but, you know, and they're all dispatched out of an R C C in Boston. You know, they, they, Boston covers this area, the district one, so, you know, I wonder if, and I really hadn't thought of that till I read this.
Well, that's, that's, I hadn't thought about it either.
Because that, that is a, that's a huge asset, or it used to be an asset, and, you know, everything comes out of any airplane, Coast Guard aircraft, whether it's fixed wing or, or rotary, comes out of Cape Cod, which is really not, it's, it's not that far, I mean, we used to do it all the time, like two, three times a week, so, you know, it's an hour, not even.
True. It certainly requires you to.
And that may have all changed since, since liflight, you know, I, I don't know.
Well, initially, right, you know, with liflight, they've got three helicopters to cover the entire state and usually when you really need them to come, that's the closest.
Well, conversely, the Coast Guard has four, maybe five, based on Cape Cod, and they go from Long Island to the Canadian border, so.
Uh, the other, one of the other issues, uh, the Blue Nose Fire in Far Harbor, that was a massive incident. I actually left from here and went to my fire department, actually fight some fires, kind of fun, but it was, it was very complicated. We had several, several dispatch agencies involved, plus dispatch agencies that should come out of the county. The fire department needed a lot of folks, so reaching out and coordinating with EMA, which, frankly, so, with us a bit, we also had a lot of resources that were tied up throughout the county, so that our folks had a hard time to keep track of. We actually had assets sitting at concern that they weren't aware of until we followed them down on Facebook posts and all these fire departments, you can't rely on, lose your head. So we're, we're working on trying to get a little better grip on what they need. And there's no offense to the island, I mean, they had a big, they had a big incident. Their fourth alarm call was basically called the R C C, it's a county coordinator, and that's, that kind of, that fails. We, I've had a conversation with the county coordinators through the fire association. I, I won't comment on that, other than, you know, we, we're, we're working on with the fire association and also the district coordinators, I'm, I'm supposed to get the phone call, and he gets the phone call, hey, can you round up ten guys from your district? And that didn't happen, but our folks down there recognized they weren't getting communication, so they put all of the area, all the local fire departments on standby, go to your stations, stand by for a truck, which worked out pretty well, so.
Is that because there's more than one R C C involved and they reach out? Because I've heard that there are incidents, and I can't remember whether it was Far Harbor here, that when there are incidents in the county, that folks from Penobscot County come and.
Well, this, this happens this particular time, there are, there are a few events like that, we get a fire in that one, but we don't dispatch that one because they've gone to the R C C, but they do at times if other departments will come down. I mean, Orland, we get Orland, a lot of times it'll come down, we get Holden that will come down, because the coordination is, we all don't share CADs, we all can't see what each other's doing.
Yeah.
It gets complicated because we have five standalone dispatch agencies in the county as well that are doing their own thing. You know, that's, that's their right, the, the coordination between dispatch agencies is what exactly you need. Because, you know, as a volunteer fire, you, you bring the battle, tell me you want me to go for a fire, I'll need to bring everything, you tell me what you need, which, everybody brought everything, so it was, it was a lot of, I, I'm guessing it was probably a couple hundred thou, or a couple hundred million dollars worth of equipment sitting on Eden Street, by College Atlantic, ours included, for this, but the, the side, the side of it is that they haven't actually had their after action before yet to talk about what went well and what didn't go well. It just seemed like at one point it was, you had, you had, the fire chief was battling the fire with his agencies and the deputy chief was looking at, using people, and by the time that we got done, there was probably fifty people standing around ready to go to work, like. Got anything else for us to do, we let it go back and cover it inside the county, so that, we're working on that for better fire coverage.
What, what, um, because we all, each R C C has a CAD system and they don't talk to each other.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, is there, and that's basically done through what's it, dispatch operator?
Oh, spill, well, we use spillman, we use spillman, yeah.
Yeah, spillman is there, and, and, and I know if Far Harbor, we were always talking about how, how useful it was for everybody to be on the same system.
It, it is helpful within the county.
Yes.
Of the county, so, but it just, you know, I mean, I don't belabor it, but as you get, you know, you've got an entity that is in charge of their incident, using their dispatcher, and they actually brought a dispatcher to the scene, sitting in the chief's vehicle, working, doing the documentation there. Uh, the, the, the issue, I guess the issue, I don't know about issue, because it worked out, was that it was just not, it was different lines of communications going in different places, so that at one point, I mean, we got sent to Ellsworth because they didn't know anybody was there, because there wasn't any communication until later, people were just kind of doing their thing, so I, I don't.
Getting everybody on the same system or systems talking really would.
Um, well, again, you, you, every, every agency has their CAD screen, so the, the agencies that they work with. The R C C, we have twenty-five fire departments that we dispatch for, so we have units, you got to scroll up and down and see who's there and all these comments, so it wasn't, my, I've always kind of said, why don't we all work on the same incident on CAD, so we don't have, you know, you know, Bucksport's got a fire card for Bucksport Fire Department that's going to Far Harbor and R C C has twelve fire departments on their CAD, and Southwest has their fire department and their CAD, and why can't we all work for that? I find that very useful as a fire chief, because I can go back and, um, I'm rendering mutually, I have, I have the advantage of seeing spillman, I work here, but if I don't, I don't know if the incident number is in the department that I'm going to help when I do my, my state report later, so that would have been helpful, however, it, it gets very cluttered very fast and you put, we have the ability to put everybody on CAD, hardly see one CAD, but then you're got, you've got so, so, I think so, but, but our folks did a great job, I think, with, you know, all, all trying to keep track of where everybody was going and what people, what they needed to be, when they, when they knew what the request was. But it did get, it was a very big incident, that was probably, had a lot more people that probably needed, but they went, you know, we always say go big early, you know, just turn people around. I think they just forgot to turn people around.
There are a few big incidences there.
Yeah, yeah, there has, yeah.
Sort of monitored or cursed or, yeah, something.
Yeah, and the other thing I really had, just briefly, because I still don't fully, I don't think anybody completely understands, it's this crisis management nine-one-one, that they, the, the public health commission released a thirty-eight page report that I, that I went through it, and a long story short, as the state legislature says, we're gonna have this nine-eight-eight number, we're gonna have crisis management, we're gonna have, you know, dispatch agencies, we're gonna have this band of people that are going to provide mental health services and social services for people that need it when they call this number. And that's basically where it lies, because there's no real, there's no national standard for this, there's no national program. You know, the only national part is, is they said, yeah, we're gonna make eight, nine-eight-eight the national number, so if you're having a bad day, that you don't need a police officer ambulance, you just want to talk to somebody, it's a three numbers and it'll go somewhere.
But they haven't funded.
There's no, yeah, there's no funding yet.
More importantly, it won't be funded.
Yeah, so they've just created it, which.
Well, and there's no, there's no infrastructure for it, there's no, you know, we, I, I participated in working your, when they first mentioned it, said, by the way, let's just approve this, we're gonna do this and we need your input. They took, you know, the eight piece out, eight of the piece, eight out of twenty-four piece out, so you're invited to participate, you did. There was a lot of issues, like, you know, what's the liability to the dispatcher, what's the liability to the agency, the county that, you know, we're not mental health professionals, yeah, we have a protocol that we can follow, it's very, very generic.
But even if you had a professional, what's the liability?
Well, that was a lot of the questions as well, is, you know, we go through, there's nothing, there's no screening process that's been put out there for our dispatchers to go, oh, yeah, this person doesn't need an ambulance, this person doesn't get it, we're gonna send it off to this person, and then they, you know, then they have the ability to send it back if they realize that, Jesus, God's really, you know, poor girl needs, you know, an ambulance, an autopsy, because, you know, they're, they had an accident, they're gonna kill their family, they didn't tell the original person, but there's no mechanism to really bring that back and process all that, and, you know, there's no, I mean, our stuff's recorded, there's no recording, I mean, it's just massive, I don't know what they're gonna do, I mean, the only, their solution was, well, we have emergency medical protocols with behavioral problems, like, you know, psychiatric problems, and they have a little bit of a sidebar program that they can attach to that, but it doesn't, it doesn't mean any of that, I just have no idea what they're gonna do. I mean, they don't even have a staff yet for.
Well, I said that nine-eight-eight right there, it was a go.
That doesn't, but as, I go, in July, nine-eight-eight will, that'll go somewhere, but I don't know what that's gonna be yet either, I don't think they know.
No, they haven't figured that part out.
There's a lot of it they haven't figured out, they said, we're gonna do this.
The only thing they've done is, is create a, a number that goes, I don't know where it might be.
So, okay, let's say it goes somewhere, probably, they'll probably bring in a temporarily, but, I don't know, so we've, we've raised a lot of concerns. There was, there was a standalone dispatch agencies, police departments, EMS agencies, all players that, you know, this is, this is what we deal with right now, how are we gonna do this?
Well, look at, to me, you look at the call volume, you send an updated, you know, so we should work from that. Call volume's going up.
Right.
You know, you start throwing this in it, not only is, is call volume gonna go up, but you gotta figure out where the call's gonna go, now we, now we know.
And you're talking a completely different set of resources, I mean, the intensive training, again, to cover the liability to provide adequate services is extreme, I mean, you're talking about people that go to school, I mean, you're talking about therapists, really. You know, somebody's gone to school for several years and not, and, and not every, maybe some dispatchers can acclimate to this, but not every dispatcher's gonna be able to, their natural reaction is to receive a call and take action, they're not, to not necessarily talk to people, talk people down or talk, they're used to taking control of an emergency situation, but that's completely different, and, yeah.
I mean, they've got, they've got the, again, there's the kind of sidebar program that's already attached to the E M D program that we use, we just don't, the state hasn't bought that, so they, they're talking about at least buying that, providing training, it's a three-day class like everything else is, but, you know, and, you know, they, they say right now, well, we won't QA that, so that won't be an additional QA requirement, that'll fall under the medical, so.
Where are you gonna get, I mean, we can't get staff what we have.
No, no, it's, and it's, it's getting busier, busier.
This is so typical, I mean, years ago, they decriminalized intoxication and whatnot, the idea they're gonna set up treatment facilities, treatment facilities or they'll be to jail.
Yeah.
You know, they banged them mental health, they shut down the mental health facilities, what now, they're gonna treat them and whatnot, they end up going to jail, I mean, so that's.
Well, we take them to the ER and the ER releases them because of the kind of, you're fined, and, you know, six hours later we're back there dealing with them again because they, they said the right, they meant to check, you know, they said the right things and therefore to get out of the ER. So I don't, I don't know, I don't know where this is gonna go and.
Why did the, why were those January numbers so high in your calls?
Uh, I think we had a real big surge in COVID people that were calling, you know, we had a ton of medical calls where, you know, they were.
Just curious.
Cause of not feeling well.
It's always been going up, but that was like a.
Yeah, no, that, I looked at it, going, geez, that seems pretty high, I think a lot of it was, some of that, you know, requests for ambulances, really, I mean, we had days where we, we had overtime, we had.
I was like, oh, there's a lot more people around.
There seems to be.
You know, spec, on the island, I, I feel like there's a lot more.
Yeah, you're, you're around, it's.
Wait, just, I don't think people went home, stayed around like they did last year, that's why our numbers were higher last year. Our, our numbers this year, twenty twenty-one, were higher than ever, ever, I mean, it was, it was crazy.
Have that good meat winner to kind of scare them back.
Well, I think, I think we're working on it.
Okay, so I'm gonna move. Oh, I didn't mean it. I'm gonna move to accept the file RCC Director's Report is presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Rob.
I'll take both.
All right, you have questions?
Morning, tents. Uh, first, questions regarding the monthly report.
I'm gonna move to accept the file Facility Directors' Report is dated, uh, and presented as, excuse, as presented in his memo dated.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen. Item B, propane contract. As you know, we've approved, uh, going up bids for propane service. But, um, uh, with an eye on energy markets, the way they are, yeah. In discussions with Scott, we, we thought maybe we'd reach out to the vendor and see if they'd extend us another year under the same terms. And initially I got a no answer, but they had some new, a different cost matrix they're using, which at the time would have made the price that we were paying, which is, uh, one seventy or so, one ninety-five. So about a five percent increase is what we saw. But then within an hour, a regional salesman called me back from Bangor and said they would extend the same terms, so. Uh, and I just felt it'd be remiss if I didn't try to do this, given the volatility of energy markets at this time. Uh, so there is that. Uh, we have a commitment in writing to extend the terms of this pricing matrix, which is, oh, point four eight cents over the Fort Bellevue cost figure, which is a east coast cost figure for propane supply. That we enjoy today, they would extend it for another year until May one, oh, twenty-three.
So I'm gonna move to approve a one-year extension to the current propane contract with Dead Rivers recommended.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Uh, thank you. Uh, C, uh, Sheriff's Office ramp update. Don't have much in the way of design, although I can tell you, uh, Seeland has been over here a number of times. We've opened up the sewer hatches down below and, and hopefully he's getting the information that he wanted. But the last time he addressed the board, I believe Commissioner Clark asked him about the snow melt. And it was an electric system. And I had told him that my preference is a hydronic system, which we already have. And works well. And I think he went with the low-hanging fruit. Can skip right over it. So I asked him again, followed up on it, and he said that there may be a twenty-five hundred dollar increase in design fees to include a hydronic option for us, uh, as opposed to just an electrical option. And here's, my reasoning for this is that we have, from our steam boiler and abundance, uh, even to a degree of wastefulness. If you've ever been down to the basement area when that steam boiler is running, it's, is, we have heat energy. Uh, to a degree that, um, it's almost foolish to not harness that. Uh, and this would be steam that creates a hot water. And we could come off this hot water and melt that snow for virtually no operating cost. Whereas, um, an electric system would require new switchgear, would require at least an additional panel to be run. Uh, maybe two and some, and a whole different myriad of controls that, uh, would put us in, you had the electric game for snow melting. And last month we had the highest electrical we've ever had in, in my tenure, which probably is, uh, the highest that we ever had here.
And it's not gonna go now.
Yeah, well, we're gonna see some relief, but, I mean, can you say the futures are, are gonna be?
No.
No, not for the, not in the near future.
So what do you think we need to encourage Mike to, to, to hydronics?
Uh, he said he would, he would do that. And I spoke with the engineers since he designs both.
Yeah.
But it's this twenty-five hundred dollars extra, which may or may not, uh, materialize based on the fact that the, the last figure, design figure we approved. I don't think he used all of those funds either. So, uh, what I would request from the board is, uh, is, uh, an additional amount of twenty-five hundred dollars, should it become necessary.
Yeah, and Dennis and I talked about this and, because I, I missed, I missed the conversation between he and the, and the engineer. So I asked Dennis about why Seeland was addressing this again. And he felt very strongly about the hydronic setup. So I said, well, let's run it through the commission and see if anybody objects. Um, and I think it's, uh, you know, gotta go with Dennis's instinct. And I agree with the electrical.
We actually need for Master to approve an additional twenty-five hundred for his ITs.
Yes.
So. Second.
So. I can't remember the discussion a little bit. Cause I kind of feel like, what was, uh, Mike's hesitancy about using hydromics? Cause I feel like there was one, I feel like there's an elevation.
He did say that, uh, a hydronic system might have air gaps or, or, uh, problems below the surface of the, of the treated area.
Freezing, leaking, you know, all those kinds.
But of course, the same conditions exist for electric service under, you know, two or three inches under that surface as well. So, and when faced with that, rebuttal, you agree, yes, that's true, but, uh.
Can we, if we have hydronics right now?
We do.
Have we ever had any issues with it?
No, and after it's set up correctly, and this is a thing that I, is not engineered, I call it together myself with a outdoor boiler, a heat exchanger. Very, you know, uh, it's a little overkill, but it works like a charm, five below zero. So.
Okay, so my motion is actually, it's moved to authorize a twenty-five hundred dollar increase in the Seelander design, uh, design contract, if needed, as requested.
Second.
Is that, is that motion okay? Yeah. I don't need to be more specific.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So we, we still have a problem with the drop-off handicap section. Did Mike bring that up again?
He, he did, when we talked about it and, uh, explained that it's, it's just very, just a demarcation. You're talking about where you pull into the slot and there's that.
To the, to the left when you get to regular park.
Yes.
Drawers make that look like a six-inch draw.
Uh, yeah, I think originally it was. So, but that's been amended to.
I get that it's small, but I guess, I just like imagining, to me, like, some, that's the kind of thing that. And it's also a thing like the plow.
Yeah, I brought the same thing.
Plow's going the other way, right?
And why does he think it needs any? I mean, if you can get it down to less than this, why does it need any?
Yeah, great point. And I couldn't agree more. My suggestion was to roll it on pavement and put paint on it.
It, it really should be feathered and very, it's got, if something, he's, I, I questioned him and he sent me an email, I can look it up, forward it to you. Something with the guys like identifying it separate and I'm like, that just, that doesn't make sense to me, but.
Paint it.
I agree, that was my suggestion, paint it.
Yeah.
You know, it could get after it because I think, you know, that's.
I just want it to be practically, practical so that a lot doesn't screw up a cloud and take care of it and it's not like this little thing where people keep twirling their hanglot.
Right.
Or stubbing their toe and falling headfirst into their.
Yeah. Yeah. Or tear the plow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm still waiting.
Uh, I'm, uh, we're on the wheelchair, you know, we're king, and I kind of just enough to treat your own.
Uh, yeah, it, it.
Doesn't make sense, but, yeah.
The argument in favor did not seem that compelling to me either.
Because we don't, it doesn't seem like we have enough issues now. We should hold this that much longer. We should be getting up to bed.
Agreed. All right. And so he didn't say he probably will have something for us by mid-month. I'll send this off to him again.
So I need to approve these two items.
I will.
All right, and did we, uh, did you agree for you the duct cleaning?
Uh, I did. And, uh, this is, uh, exactly what we asked for. There are a couple of points here that, uh, I bring to your attention before making the recommendation. And, uh, uh, includes the registers, which are a, a big problem up in the jail. Those are the defusers that sit on the wall. They fill them with plastic. They make their own plaster. It's disgusting. But those we clean, reconditioned, replaced if necessary. Uh, yeah, uh, and, and then they complain they have no need, they belong to, but that's a, a different, uh, subject. The ceiling of all the ha- hatches where they access the ductwork, they're going to seal it back up correctly. Uh, it, it'll all be done under negative pressure. In other words, they got like a vacuum and the duct only toward it. So nothing gets, you know, expressed into the space or into the coils. And, uh, the, the one item that gave me pause, which I think is very workable from our standpoint, is the prices for regular hours, like, uh, not no nights and weekends. And if we decided that that were necessary, I think they would do it. But there would be an additional cost. And of course, you'd be made aware of that.
What's, what's Tim's thing?
Well, in advance, uh, Tim likes, they did the.
The non-fair is working just week day.
Yeah, uh, it's. He prefers week days, because we, he has, he has more staffing.
Right, that's okay.
So it makes sense.
So this, that shouldn't be an issue, right?
No, it really shouldn't. I mean, it's outside. Something happens where we need to clear someone out or, or we, you know, I can't imagine this.
Oh, okay, well, we'd approach that situation.
Right, you'd be, you'd know well in advance, I think.
Can we get, is there any way that we can get, like, uh, some before pictures, so that we can understand the job, the job?
I have a vendor went through it.
And see afterwards, like before and after.
Yeah.
It's always nice to see how, see what, what we're addressing and what we're, what the fix look like.
And this was the only bid we got this day.
Only bid, yeah. And these folks also did the Konauchan County Jail.
Yeah. Yeah.
I guess.
Really, Paul?
Yeah, I'm gonna move to award pronounced Scott cleaning, a duct cleaning contract in the amount of twenty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars. To be, to be paid from I P A funds as recommended. And that is the recommendation, right?
It is.
Yep.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you, Dennis.
That's great, gentlemen. I'll get this underway and, uh, I'll keep you posted with respect to progress. And again, the most challenging will be working with jails, uh, availability for these parts. And they're, they are.
And they should, yeah, they should be familiar with that, because they've been in there plenty of times, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, to know better.
Yeah, okay. Chair, if I could, before we move on, I see Kerry Lewis, uh, who is from T V Bank.
Thanks, Al.
And maybe, Kerry, can you hear us?
Sorry, I want to take it off mute. Yes, I can.
Yeah, um, Kerry, we, we have addressed the R F P, which was awarded to Machias earlier.
Um. Okay.
Basically just, we, we took it out of order. It, it, it seemed to fit in with what was going on currently. And I apologize for that, but I had, I don't know, I don't know if you've been on there long. I hope not very long, because I just happened to notice your, your name up there.
No, no, unfortunately I had morning appointment, so I got in towards the end. Um, so thank you for that update. I appreciate that.
Yeah, and, and thank you for your submission. And we'll, we'll be in, in touch to kind of finalize things, uh, today or tomorrow. Okay, thank you.
Okay, yep, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna move to approve the monthly bills and warrants as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anything else for treasurer? Okay, is that original up here, remember that warrant memo?
Yeah, I have it.
We, nothing else?
Hold on, the jail union contract?
Yeah.
Yeah. I've moved signed collective bargaining agreement between Hancock County and Keamster Union Local Three Forty to the jail unit for the period starting January one, twenty twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 You should have, I think, three copies there.
How many signed?
Yeah, his, yeah. Those are his originals that he sent out, so they're better in signature.
These are just copies, right?
Yes, yeah, John has the, the three originals. Was it three of them, John?
I think it's just two.
Yes, two, okay. Yeah, I only saw two signed sheets. Usually he sends three, it seemed kind of thick, but, okay. Yeah, if you wanted to, if you wanted a copy of it, I think that's why I had to give you a copy sometimes. The commission's like, keep a copy on hand up here, but, yeah, yeah.
I just put it in my meeting log that.
Fine, whatever. It's really for your access, just, just so you have a copy in.
You need, yes, you need to sign all three.
Yeah, what I'll do is send, send him back a copy and then we put our original on record and then, uh, copies again downstairs amongst us.
One, two.
Yeah, it's actually, we have two.
I guess it was one, too, yeah.
Okay, so our item D?
Yeah, basically, um, so as of the fact, when we talk about retro, um, of course, the part timers were still getting the old rate until the contract is negotiated inside. So this is basically questioning the commission as to whether your intent is to offer retro to the, back to the first of the year, like we did with, uh, union personnel, with the part time personnel. And the total for that is around eight hundred bucks.
I would say yes.
I, I think retention and goodwill, it would be money well spent, yeah.
So, while in fairness and, uh.
I think it's consistent with policy.
Yeah.
Policy says you'll get this when it becomes effective and it's effective January first.
Well, yeah, but they're not a union, so.
I know it. The policy for signing the part-time rate is always going to be.
So, yeah, I agree, yeah, I agree with making that happen, so.
So he needs some action. Move to, uh, approve retro part-time, or this is for, for non-union?
Just for part-time, um, general personnel would be appropriate.
For, for part-time general personnel.
Yep.
So.
Back to January first.
Uh, effective January first.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, thank you. And then the next meetings I have are March fifteenth, April fifth, and April twentieth is a Wednesday due to Patriots Day.
Well, that's the only Wednesday.
Yeah, Seattle, Tuesday, yeah, yeah, yes. March fifteenth is a Tuesday, April fifth is Tuesday, and April twentieth is Wednesday.
And just take action, it's just.
They're just, yeah, really just to, yeah, they're just kind of. Really, so if we have an odd one, like the Wednesday, we would kind of announce that ahead of time.
Move to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.